Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Roy Jones, Jr. of Avery AME Church is here. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Pat Ryan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. Eternal God, we thank you for a new day. We thank you for keeping your angels encamped around us. We thank you for the city of Oklahoma, the mayor and all of the leaders. And we pray now that you would give us divine wisdom, dear God. And we pray that you will instill in us a sense of unity. And we pray that every decision that we make will benefit the people, dear God, and that will glorify you. We thank you, we praise you. Now just keep your angels encamped around us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will ask Lucas Adams and his family and friends, come on forward and stand with us. Lucas is quite a young man. He recently was one of over 1 million students across the country that took the ACT test. He is one of a very few group that scored a perfect score on the test. He is from Putnam City North. We have a resolution this morning to honor his achievement, and I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Putnam City North High School senior Lucas Adams scored a perfect 36 on the ACT. Whereas Lucas is a 2012 National Merit finalist. Lucas is an Advanced Placement Scholar with honors in the Euro AP Examination, English III AP Examination, US History AP Examination, and Environmental Science AP Examination. Whereas Lucas has received a number of awards and distinctions throughout high school, including Citizen of the Month Outstanding Precalculus Student, Computer Applications One Award, Panther of the Day Debate One Award, Highest National Forensic League Points, and Governor's Commendation for Selection for 2011 Oklahoma Arts Institute. Lucas is involved in marching and concert band, the Philharmonic Orchestra Jazz Band, National Society of High School Scholars, and National Forensic League. Whereas during high school, Lucas has made the Central Oklahoma Directors Association Honor Band twice, Oklahoma Baptist University's Honor Band, Oklahoma Music Educators Association Allstate Band, Policy Debate Team, and the Lincoln Douglas Debate Team. Whereas outside of his academic life, Lucas has been active in his church's youth worship band, youth choir, Christian Leadership Camp, Falls Creek Youth Camp, Resonate Works Arts Camp, High School Leadership Team, and International World Chamber's East Asia Two Team. Whereas Lucas has participated in mission trips to Mexico, Bangladesh, Peru, and China. Lucas is the son of the very proud parents Randy and Paula Adams of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby commend Lucas Adams on achieving a perfect score of 36 on his ACT exam.
Now, a civics lesson. We have to vote on this, whether or not we want to award this resolution or not. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. And if you look up there, it's all green lights. Now let's show our appreciation one more time. Congratulations. Appreciate it very much. You bet. And I'll hand the microphone to you if there's anybody you'd like to thank.
I'd just like to thank the city of Oklahoma City and Mayor Cornet for recognizing me. And I feel like it's an undeserved honor, but I'll take it.
Well, thanks very much. Congratulations to the parents, too. It's quite an achievement for you all as well. Congratulations. Good family. Good luck on choosing that college. All right. Also this morning, we are going to remember the life of Bert Cooper. And Terry and Rick, are you all want to come forward? Bert Cooper was a civic leader for several decades in Oklahoma City, and he passed away recently. Again, we have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas William Bert Cooper was born in Hattiesburg, Mississippi on February 26, 1930, to William and Wilhelmine Cooper, and died February 28, 2012, at the age of 82. Whereas Bert grew up in Enid, Oklahoma, with two brothers Jim and Larry and his baby sister Mary. He graduated from Enid High School and Oklahoma A&amp;M University. Whereas Bert went to work in the sales department at W&amp;W Steel in 1951 and rose to become CEO and Chairman of the Board. He later acquired W&amp;W Steel and AFCO Steel, which created one of the largest structural steel companies in the United States. Whereas among the projects completed by the company under Bert's guidance were OSU's Boone Pickens Stadium, Dallas Cowboys Stadium, the New York Times Building in Manhattan, and the 9-1-1 Memorial Pavilion. Whereas Bert served on the original MAPS Oversight Committee, the Riverfront Redevelopment Authority, the Myriad Gardens Authority and Foundation, and the Oklahoma City Parks Commission. He was instrumental in the completion of the Lake Hefner Trails, and a monument now stands at Lake Hefner dedicated to his leadership and contribution. Whereas Bert's next greatest love after his family was Oklahoma State University. He endowed professor chairs, funded scholarships, and contributed to the OSU Cowboy Athletics. Whereas Bert was preceded in death by his parents and his brother Jim. Bert is survived by his loving wife Terry, brother Larry Cooper, and his wife Ann, sister Mary Heinrichson, her husband Christian, son Rick and his wife Larry, son Larry and his wife Monica, stepdaughter Jennifer Evanson and her husband Tom, stepdaughter Jillian Landon and her husband Jesse, grandchildren Tana Cooper and his wife Lindsay and their son Jackson, Tyler Cooper and his wife Megan, Riley Cooper, Lindsay Cooper, Andy Evanson and Charlie Evanson, and numerous loving nieces and nephews, and a host of friends who loved him dearly. Whereas those who knew Bert described him as a huge presence possessing a great sense of humor and an effortless charm. He will be deeply missed and always fondly remembered. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby extend their deepest sympathies to the family and friends of William Bert Cooper.
And once again, I'll ask for a motion and a second, and cast your votes. I think Bert would approve with some green lights up there in his honor this morning. Let's show our appreciation to Bert Cooper and all of you up to Congress.
I'd like to say thank you very much. Bert loved the city, and he loved the employees, and he loved being able to make contribution to the city's growth. Meant a lot to him.
He certainly gave a lot of his time and efforts, and we appreciate him through the years. I can remember working with him specifically on several projects. And of course, the MAPS Oversight Board, that was the original citizen oversight board that the series of initiatives that's changed the city forever. So that's among his monuments. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming down this morning. We are on item four of the council agendas. The Journal of Council Proceedings selects for a motion on item A and B, which is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for March 13th and to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for March 6th. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just a couple this morning. First one is on page nine under item eight, E181, item J, 1745 Northeast 11th Street. Whereas that be stricken, that is now occupied. And on page nine also, item eight F, which is a revocable permit for the Paseo Arts Festival. Whereas that be deferred one week until March 27th.
Any other requests for unconditional? Or any requests for uncontested continuances? All right, recess the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are three items. We have a motion. How about a second? Any comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC MFA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are two items. Comments or questions on the PPA?
I did just have a quick question. Have we estimated what the cost of the golf courtesy rounds would be for this tournament?
No, but I think Troy is here somewhere, maybe in the back room from the golf course that may be coming to answer that question. Here's Rob Lewis. And Troy. Rob, the question is, what would the cost be for the courtesy golf rounds for the USGA Tournament?
The USGA Tournament? The only, it'll be a zero cost for the individual that's actually participating. Otherwise, all the other fees will apply, cart rentals, food fees.
So what was the cost to the city? What were given out there? Be X amount of rounds?
It'd be approximately 55 rounds if we, I mean, it's, you don't know who's going to enter, but approximately 55 rounds.
55 rounds at 20 some dollars apiece, it'd be slightly over $1,000.
Trying to quantify. Thank you.
How many is expected to in the tournament?
Historically at Lincoln, it's been around 55 people that have entered. We've done it twice with Lincoln, and that's, it's been in the 50 to 60 range of individuals that have entered in the men's tournament.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the PPA. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn OC PPA and reconvene the council meeting with the consent document. All right. Any comments or questions on the consent document?
Your Honor, I should add a couple minor questions on item R and item T.
Okay.
If I could, I just wanted to mention six E.
We also have one person who has signed up to speak on T, so why don't we have Eric Rothwell come forward? And then Pat has some comments on that item as well. Good morning, Eric. This is the item concerning the bicycle share program.
Yeah, I was just a resident stating my, how much I'm for the bicycle share program. Sponsoring a bicycle share program in Oklahoma City, the positive movement towards a big city market and promotes healthy lifestyle. Many cities that we are competing with already have bicycle share programs. Boston, Denver, Chicago, Minneapolis are a few. It would give people another option instead of driving a car with today's high gas prices. It is a sustainable form of transportation that would increase Oklahoma's transportation network. Lastly, Oklahoma is currently ranked 48th in health indicators. The state has extremely high rates of obesity. Governor Mary Fallon has already put steps in place to make the state department healthier. Oklahoma City should follow suit and promote healthy living for its residents. That's all I have.
I appreciate you coming down, Eric. Thanks. And Pat, you wanted to comment on the item?
Well, I think it's also, I agree 100% with what the young man just said. I think it's a great program. I had a question on the funding of the program. There's an initial funding by virtue of some federal grant. And how long will that grant take, be in place? Will it be a recurring sort of thing, or is this a one-off kind of?
Good morning. I'm Jennifer Gooden, the Sustainability Director. The federal funding is an Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, and it lasts through August of this year.
Okay. Then we estimate that the revenue will be $100,000 annually.
Yes.
Is that sufficient to pay for the program once we get it in place?
That's sufficient to pay for the operating, the difference between the operating costs and the amount that we expect to generate from user fees and membership fees.
As we pointed out last week, Councilman, we're plowing new ground.
I understand that.
There's a lot of assumptions as we go forward. We have no real data as to what the penetration's going to be of this product as we go forward, and so there's risk involved here. But our best guess is, and our goal is to establish a breakeven profit.
Okay, so ultimately, we'll hope to have enough revenue to cover the operating costs?
In a combination of the fees that we receive and the sponsorship.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Jennifer. Thank you. It's a great program. I'm not being critical at all, I'm just curious about the financing of it.
Okay. And Pat, you wanted to talk about item R as well?
Item R, this is a resolution for the city treasurer to assist the Oklahoma Tax Commission with the collection of sales tax. And it talks about employing some additional outside auditors to help that effort. Who pays for those auditors?
We will pay for that cost.
Okay. And do we feel, and I realize it's an estimate, we feel that we'll generate enough income, additional income off the sales tax to pay for those additional auditors and then have money left over for the citizens?
Yes, sir. A few years ago, we had a similar program in place and ran into some legal issues. And we'd actually brought a contract back, it was a few weeks back, and Bob Ponkill, our city treasurer, explained what we're going to be doing in the contract and the program. But when we ran that, I think it was back in 2005, 2006 timeframe, it was about a six-to-one ratio of the revenues versus the cost. And so this allows the city treasurer to be authorized that if another city enters into a contract with auditors and they run into a situation that they're auditing a vendor that is also in Oklahoma City, we can join into that contract and just pay our portion of the audit. And so we already have in place to be able to use the auditors for initiating our own audits. But if the tax commissioner or another city is using an auditor, now the city treasurer could also become a part of that if he felt like it would benefit the city.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Pat, excuse me, Your Honor, if I may, just a couple more words on that. We've experienced that just with clients, and the six-to-one return is, I think, is a very accurate projection, if not higher. The sales and use tax rules are very complicated, and often when you have a specific audit performed on that particular issue, you're going to find instances in just about every type of company where they have not paid the appropriate amount of sales tax. And these auditors that the city has engaged specialize in this, and they work both sides. They work with clients, individual businesses, to help identify when they paid too much. But certainly when they're working for us, they tend to do a very good job, and the return is usually quite high in the city's favor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate it.
Meg, you want to talk about item E?
I did. I just, item 6E is a resolution that authorizes us to negotiate a contract with Wallace Roberts Todd and another group. It's partnering to take a look at the master plan for our parks system. And you may remember that this is a partnership between the city and Oklahoma City Community Foundation, and will help us, I think, address a lot of the questions that we've had around this horseshoe and otherwise about the functionality of each of our parks and how they link together and how we don't create overlaps and things like that. It's a wonderful opportunity to take a really broad look at the city's park system as a whole.
I have a question, and I follow up on Meg's comments, which I think the study's an excellent idea. Will it include our new central park as well?
I can't answer that. I don't recall a specific scope. I believe it does, but maybe Wendell can come in and answer that question for us.
That's okay. Just more curiosity question than anything else. That is an important piece of our overall park plan. And there's been some question about how it would be programmed and how it would mesh with the other parks. And if we could include it, I think it would be a worthwhile effort.
Or Russell?
It's a Russell. Good morning. And she just disappeared.
Don't want to insult Wendell. It's a multi-departmental effort. The intent is that the entire open space system be looked at. So the integration of any of the parks that are in the system now and that are intended to be constructed over the life of the comprehensive plan will be addressed.
Okay. Well, will the projects that are presently listed in the Parks Improvement Plan, will those projects be put on hold until the study is completed?
Not at all. Those are voted in by our voters, and we will proceed with those as soon as.
We're going to go ahead and proceed with those.
Yes, sir.
All right, ready to vote the consent document? Any other comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Nothing on the concurrence document today, so we move on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Five at 12301 South May. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become an O2 general office, airport, and environs overlay district. And we have one person who has signed up to speak. It's in Ward Five, David.
Thank you, Ron.
Yeah, sure.
May the individual who signed up to speak.
Blake Farrar? Yeah, come on up, Blake.
And outs?
Good morning. We will need your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. Blake Farrar reside at 3001 Southwest 124th Street.
Okay. Are you speaking in favor of this today or against it?
I'm speaking against.
Against it, okay. Feel free to pass out that.
Okay.
Your documents.
I apologize. I only made four copies, so.
Okay.
Oh, you already know that.
Does everyone have a copy? Plate number one is a adjacent property just to the north of the property for rezoning. Just kind of showing the architectural style of the area. The second plate is a picture of a house in Ribndale directly to the east. Again, showing the architecture. The plate number three is a doctor's office and I think maybe an attorney's office. I didn't really look, but kind of shows a, the style of the area. And the next shot is of the rear of the facility. This is on 119th Street, just to the north and east of the property being asked to be rezoned. And then the next plate is my residence that if you can look at the steel pipe is the borderline between a baseball park directly to the west and my property. And then the next shot would be a shot of the property that's already been rezoned to a O2, I believe. And the next few shots are of that same property. And I guess my main question is, are we going to get more of this type of architecture approaching my property and reducing my property value? I think that a O1 may be a better zoning for the property, but, let's see, yes, an O1 district that would have smaller structures and have more landscape, a better landscape setting in it. So anyway, just for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Your Honor, I was told just at the start of our meeting that the developer was not informed that the hearing was set for today at the city council meeting, so he's not in a position to respond to those specific questions. The, I am somewhat familiar with the area, and there has not been too much in the way of commercial development along May Avenue, but it's certainly an area that will at some point in time receive this. The Planning Commission is recommending it. There is no protest at the Planning Commission meetings at this point. I appreciate the gentleman's concerns about this, and while I've not seen the specific plans, I would suspect that they'll be presented in a manner that hopefully is, you know, going to enhance the area, because currently there's just no development out there along this area, other than the law firm that the gentleman showed some of the pictures of their facility out there. So at this point, I would recommend that we move forward with the proposal and recommend it for approval.
I have a question, Your Honor. That panhandle extension that goes to the west and the bulk of the property, what was the purpose of that?
That area there is the access road to the ballpark, which is the Davis Ball Field. It's a minor league baseball, football complex. And we initially asked them to delete it, but it really, there's an access agreement between the ballpark and that property owner, so it can't be used for anything other than access to the ballpark.
And so that's why, I understand it should be deleted from the?
Well, they, we, the Planning Commission decided not, they approved it without that recommendation to delete it, because the access easement's going to be there if it's selling double-A or O2 either way.
Thank you, Your Honor. That's the only question.
Do we know what the applicant is intending to use the property rezoning for?
Well, they stated that they'd hope to do some office development. The O2 zoning district doesn't set architectural standards for the buildings, but it's very similar to O1. The landscaping's going to be the same. There are a few uses that aren't allowed in O1. Unless it's an SPOD, we don't really look at architectural standards. This is a straight zoning. But O1, O2 is a compatible zoning district with residential. We have an adjoining residential hall of Oklahoma City.
Okay. Thanks. Any other comments or questions, Gary?
Are those allowed in O2?
Well, they'll be non-conforming if the property's zoned. They were allowed in the double-A zoning when it was, when they were built.
Okay. But O2 couldn't have, we couldn't have more metal buildings under this rezoning.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this item? We have a motion and a second already. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Your Honor, if I may, they've also requested an emergency clause on this, and so I'd move for the emergency clause.
There's seven of us here, Francis. Can we do an emergency?
Yes, you would take all seven.
All seven. All right, cast your votes. Emergency passes, seven, zero. On item 8A2, it's a zoning case in Ward Seven at 10330 North Hudson Avenue. It's currently our one single-family residential. It would become a simplified plan unit development district. And Skip, we have one person that has signed up to speak.
Just speak against?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We will need your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is John Walker. I live at 3509 Northwest 69th Street in Oklahoma City. I'm here to talk about the SPUD 601. I'm a trustee of a trust for my children. This trust owns Block 10 Glen Air Edition, immediately southeast of the subject property, Block 24 Glen Air Edition. I've sent each council member here an email detailing eight reasons why this request for SPUD 601 should be denied. I don't have the time to spend going over that list, except to say that the list includes every possible sort of violation of regulations by this applicant that I can imagine. On top of that, there are even city services, there aren't even city services available at the property, except sanitary sewer, including no paved streets in the area. So in my opinion, the applicant isn't here asking for permission for anything, especially a zoning change. He's here asking for forgiveness. Why forgiveness? The applicant is already using the property for the use he is here today asking for, and he has been for at least three years. I don't know why he bothers now. Maybe it's becoming too obvious, being just 1,000 feet off the Broadway Extension. And you can see the boom of the crane that he moved over to the southeast corner of his property, right after I started protesting this application. Very clearly from the offices of Scott. of Scott Sabliss Prosthetics and Research Building at the south, at the northwest corner of 101st Street and the West Frontage Road of Broadway Extension. Very nice building, may I say, designed by Rand Elliott, complements the landscape. Makes me think of Dallas. Most of us have been there, driving up the North Dallas Toll Road, all the way from downtown to Frisco, Texas, forty miles or so, lined with quality structures, mixed uses, office, apartments, commercial and retail buildings, all with ample landscaping. Right now, with this vote, two views of the Broadway Extension corridor in this section are being set in stone. I see a vision that favors high quality office, multifamily, commercial uses along the Broadway Extension, like that exemplified by Mr. Sabliss' building and like what we all see when we go to Dallas. The other vision's one of metal buildings, outside storage, no paved parking or driveways, no landscaping, no city services. Which vision do you favor? Stop SPUD 601, say yes to quality. Anybody have any questions about any email I sent them?
Show me where your property is.
My property is, uh, just to the southeast of that property. It has just, uh, the subject is just under that, where the R1 is, under the subject.
Uh huh.
It's that five acre tract right there, four and a half acres up there.
That's like a double lot?
It's a-
I mean, according to what this one's charted out?
Uh, it's a single piece of property, it's about a five acre tract, yes, sir.
And has access to 101st Street?
101st Street does not go through, sir. It's not a paved street, it's a right of way. This property was developed years ago, platted years ago before there was a requirement that developers put in the, the infrastructure before they start selling the lots. And consequently, uh, there's a lack of public utilities, including paved streets in the area, and that's why it languishes, it's, and that issue's never been fully addressed and, uh-
What, what are you, are you currently using the property for?
It's a vacant tract at this time.
Okay. All right, Skip? John, thanks for coming down.
Thank you, any questions?
I believe the representative is, is here, the, for the applicant, but, um, is it my understanding that there's already a use of the, uh, the area similar, except for the fact that when they went before the planning commission, they did not include the automotive and heavy equipment use of the, uh, of the property? Am I mistaken in reference to the, the present use of the, uh?
No, sir, you're correct. The property has been zoned I1. That says R1, that is incorrect. We zoned the property, oh, back at the beginning of this year, I believe. Don't have the exact date with me, but it's already I1, and all we needed was to add an additional use to what we already had.
The property was zoned for an S P U D with an I1 overlay. We got, and the map doesn't reflect that, I apologize for that. So it, it's been zoned, but the use that he proposed wasn't included in that original S P U D, and so he had to come back, and that's what he's doing now, is to try to add those I2 uses. I think there's two of them that he needed.
What is the use that he intends for this property?
Automobile equipment, cleaning repairs and light equipment, and then automobile equipment, heavy repairs and heavy equipment. Was the only two things. Everything else for the automobile industry was already there, we just added those two.
Okay, and is, is the applicant planning to operate a business here or just trying to get the zoning?
He is planning on building a building and operating a business.
Okay.
And he will comply with the, the, all the things that they've said, the streets and all that. The gentleman that was just up here a minute ago, I've attempted to try to contact him numerous times, but the address that was given to me was 3509 Northwest 69th, and I've been there at least ten or fifteen times, and there's no one lives at that address. So, and I tried to get the phone number and I never could get a phone number for him. So I wanted you to know, I, I have attempted to, uh, to get ahold of this gentleman.
Okay.
But no one wrote a letter that I'm aware of or showed up at planning commission when this was approved this time or the previous time. So, uh, I just got wind of the letter and tried to approach the gentleman and couldn't find him, so.
Mayor, um, in, in all fairness, I would ask, because I, I think there's probably some, uh, you know, clerical misstatements, and I know the staff, this report, in some parts of the report, it even refers to Ward two as, as the area. And I talked to Mr. Dize, and he did express to me that he had not had an opportunity to speak with the, uh, the gentleman that was here, what's his name?
Mr. Walker.
Walker, Mr. Walker. And, and in light of the fact that there's, uh, it had already been zoned-
Yes, sir.
-for a compatible use, that's what this applicant is for, is for is just the amending of, of that previous, uh, request that passed the, the planning commission that we approved. Is it possible that we could get some additional time to allow you and Mr. Walker, Mr. Dize and Mr. Walker, to have an opportunity to sit down and discuss maybe some of his concerns as it relates to, to going forth with the project? You know, I, I feel like that if, if you had the proper, uh, address and the information to contact Mr. Walker, or maybe vice versa, you know, maybe there could have been some, you know, better working relationship of understanding what we're, what you're attempting to do and address and listen to some of his concerns. Is that-
I'd like an opportunity to get an updated, uh, staff report to the council, so he'll know the facts-
Okay.
-were presented this time.
Now, it's presently zoned, as I understand it, this is just west of the, the Broadway Extension off the Service Road. Many of those streets that don't go all the way through to Hefner, but it's, uh, it's south of, of Hefner, is that correct?
That's correct. It, it really takes us access off of Hudson Avenue, that's a, really, it's not an improved city street, that's his driveway.
We have zoned several, see, I think there's five or six altogether that has been zoned I1 and I2, just to the north of this property here.
Okay. And one of the other concerns that I, I kinda have in reference to some of these areas, and I know that there's, uh, a lot of small businesses that pop up in some of these areas where, at the time when the developer purchased these properties, they didn't require them to put in the infrastructure. And as you go forward with, with these businesses, are we requiring any type of, of, of infrastructure, development?
This, this property's already platted, but when they come in for a building permit, then we'll look at those utility requirements.
There has been those requirements made, even as far as the street goes.
So it's your, your, it's in your plans to put in the street?
Yes, sir.
And the-
Through this property.
Okay, okay. Well, I, I, I think that may get to one of the concerns, and, and so if, I would ask that if we could defer this, mayor, to, to give staff, the applicant and, and Mr. Walker an opportunity to sit down and, and maybe work out some of these differences and come back.
Well, you looking at a couple of weeks, Skip, or how, how long do you want to wait?
Staff, tell me what you think would be-
I think two weeks would be enough time.
Two weeks, it's fine.
Okay. March, April, or what?
April 3rd.
April 3rd, all right.
So the motion is, is that we defer this until April the 3rd?
All right, we have a motion and a second to defer this item two weeks. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you both for coming down. On item eight A three, it's a zoning case in Ward five, the address is 8701 South Santa Fe Avenue. It's currently an R1 single family residential district and it would become a new simplified plan unit development district. David?
Yes, thank you, your honor. Do we have anyone here signed up to speak on this matter? Okay.
We do have one person that has signed up. Can we call him up?
Yes, please.
Don Nicholson? Good morning, Don, we'll need your name and address for the record.
Donald Nicholson, 13009 Maple Leaf Drive, Oklahoma City.
Okay, are you speaking in favor of this?
I'm opposed to it at this time, yes, sir.
Okay.
I own the property just south of the subject property here, and it's also R1. It's the other half of that city block, uh, just below that. And it's, uh, residential. I, my future plans, and the intended purpose of buying that was to build my retirement home. And it's currently rental property, and, uh, I just believe that storage unit facility there would, uh, in the middle of the block, or in the middle of that residential area, would be a deterrent to, um, my property value and the aesthetic value of my home there in the future.
Were you at the planning commission meeting when this was discussed?
No, sir, I-
Okay.
erroneously thought that it was unnecessary, because I wasn't aware that residential property would ever be converted to commercial property in the middle of other residential property. It's probably a false assumption, but I just assumed that, uh, that wouldn't or couldn't happen, wouldn't be approved. But, um, if this is approved, it'll drastically change my future plans for this property, and I'll have to rethink what I'll do to that property in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Your honor, I think we have some other people, they failed to sign up.
All right, come on forward.
Hi, Frank Wise. I live at, uh, 130 Southwest 87th Street. And I just represent the people that are due west of this project, and we're not, uh, we're in favor of it going ahead, if that's what the council wants. We just have some concerns about the security of that area. It's pretty private, there'll probably be more people pass through the facility than we see daily, going up and down the streets, and there were three concerns that we had. One was that, that the fencing around it is eight foot tall, as opposed to six to eight foot tall, and, um, that the landscaping on the backside, that piece of property, uh, butts to the corner of Mr. McHenry's property, uh, on the, on the southwest corner. But we'd just like to have some landscaping across the back, so we just don't look at a blank wall. And the other one, of course, would be lighting, that the lighting is directed in such a way that it's just on the facility and not on, over on the homes.
Okay.
Just a concern that we have as neighbors.
Yes, sir. Um, yeah, do you wanna-
Right now, I'm Jack McHenry, 117 Southwest 87th. My house isn't on this plot, but we just built a house there, and my house turns at a forty-five degree angle, and we look straight into that. And I can take my truck from that line, and I can drive behind everybody's house in that neighborhood. Everybody in that neighborhood has been broken into on their storage building, someone's actually been broken their homes. So if he puts this facility in without any kind of security measures, it opens my house up, Randy Donnis' house is next door to mine, Frank's on the corner of me, Dale Bowen's house is there, the Sanders there, we can drive a pickup right behind everybody's house. Like I said, everybody's already been broken into, except for me, I didn't build a shed or building it for my shop. And that's our concern, is what kind of accessibility does the public have to this? Can they, can I just drive in there, drive to the back of the fence, climb the fence, go into my house? And I, I didn't get the notice, they sent the notice to my old address. I've been in this house for nine months, so I never get the notice for the planning commission. So my concern is the security of the facility, and how secure is he gonna keep us as neighbors in that neighborhood?
Right, and on the application, there are certain restrictions that are identified, and perhaps staff could address those, uh, comments at this point.
With personal storage, the ordinance gives them the ability to use their building as screening, as opposed to putting in a fence and a landscape buffer, and I think that's what they're proposing to do to the back on the west side here. But the council, since this is a, uh, S P U D, could require any type of screening, fencing, landscaping that you felt was appropriate. It may be appropriate here to have the applicant meet with these people, because I wasn't aware that there was a protest until right now.
Yes, sir, we had not received any protest concerning this matter, so, uh, at this point in time, perhaps, uh, we should follow the recommendation and, and postpone the decision on this for two weeks possibly?
That's what I'd recommend.
Yes, sir, and then that would allow the various, uh, individuals living out in the area to meet with the applicant and, uh, address those concerns together. Hopefully, you all could come to an agreement that everyone's comfortable with and, and move forward.
I agree, I mean, I'm not against progress, I'm not against building economic growth in the city. I have a business just a mile and a half from there, and my concern is opening the back of my house up to someone that can walk in there and break into my home.
Yes, sir. Well, um, the point I just wanna make is, in, in any type of situation where there's new development, there'll always be some people that may be in favor, some that are not in favor, but at least, I think it's important that we give everybody the opportunity to express those concerns and have dialogue between the proposed developer and, and the people who are currently living out there. And you still may not be able to come to a point where you're in full agreement with it, but at least you've had the opportunity to present those concerns.
Okay.
Do we have one more gentleman?
Yes, sir, one more person that'd like to-
That would like to come forward?
Come on forward. Sure, come on up.
My name's Rocky Turnage, and we are the ones that are proposing doing this. The facility will be secured, where nobody can drive through or go through the back of the property or anything, because there is gonna be a fence around the entire property. And the way that we have, have it designed now, um, there's no building that is actually gonna be on the property line, there's gonna be a drive around the buildings themselves in the back and the front, everything. So everything's at least fifteen feet on the sides, and I think it's twenty feet on the back away from the property line. We have no problem making the fence a little taller and all that. Landscaping the back, I don't have a problem landscaping the back on their property a little bit, you know, putting some shrubs and whatnot, I don't wanna maintain them, you know, for them on their property, but other than that, we have no problem. But there won't be any way for anybody to come through, and it will be secure in that we'll have security cameras that look down all the, uh, streets that go in between the buildings, and, uh, it'll be fenced and gated on the front, and you'll have just card access in order to be able to get in. So-
Yes, sir.
It's not a, there's not a transition toward anybody, unless they jump over the eight foot fence or six foot fence, or whichever one we do, I prefer six foot, obviously, but if it's, needs to be gated, can be eight. But they have to jump over or cut the fence down or whatever in order to be able to get through, and the fence is gonna be partly, uh, partly masonry and partly, uh, wood, I believe, I don't know which, whichever one it is, but they won't be able to drive through, there's no way possible.
Yes, sir.
If that answers any questions, I just wanted to-
That's very helpful, and again, I'm not opposed to it, but I just think it may warrant just some additional time, say two weeks, to allow, uh, you and the various residents out in the area to just share some ideas and thoughts, and, uh-
If they'll meet with me, I'll give them my number and we can talk to them whenever.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate you coming down. Uh, so I'd like to make the motion that we defer this for two weeks, your honor.
Second.
Motion and a second to defer item eight A three to April 3rd. Any other comments or questions today? All right, cast your votes. That deferment passes unanimously. Item eight A four is a zoning case in Ward two. The address is 3620 Northwestern Avenue. It's currently R1 single family residential, it would become a simplified plan unit development district. Has anyone signed up to speak against this item? All right, is the applicant here? All right, how about a motion? All right, we're voting on item eight A four, cast your votes. Item passed unanimously. Item eight B is a traffic issue in Ward two, it's to establish a couple of no parking signs. How about a motion on item eight B? Anyone here wishing to speak on our item eight B? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight C is a public hearing. This item was introduced last week, and we had a presentation at that time. Any comments or questions today on item eight C as we move this along the chain? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight D is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. We have four items listed to- We have four items listed today, is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8D?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 8E is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8E?
Yes.
Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 8F has been deferred until March 27th, that's a one-week deferral for item 8F. Item 8G, I understand we do need executive session on this item?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes, I'm moving item 8G to executive session, that item is moved. Item 8H is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8H?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. There's one item listed, we have a motion. Anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under item 9? All right, sounds like we're good to go, cast your votes, passed unanimously. Moves us on to items from council. Gary, everything this morning?
Yes.
All right, Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, I'd like to compliment the neighborhood, neighbors in Windsor Forest for a great neighborhood meeting last Thursday evening, and then also in River Park, and this past Saturday, they had, had their Bowathon, raising funds to rehab elderly citizens' homes in their area, and they've gotten the support of Hodges Trucking and Dell, those folks are going to come out and lend their expertise and help, so some great things going on over in River Park. Thank you, Your Honor.
David? No, Your Honor, thank you. Okay, Meg?
Chief, may I just say a couple of things? City manager, if you could pass on to the chief how much I appreciated, we had Sergeant LaRuece and Major McCool at a joint neighborhood meeting of Crestwood, Miller, and the Cleveland Neighborhood. Councilman Shadid was also in attendance, and it was a, it was just, it was a great meeting. We've actually had a fairly serious rash of burglaries over there, and the police chief and staff had identified it, sort of previous to it bubbling up, and they were able to talk about the steps they were taking, and we've already had two arrests since that meeting, and it looks like we've got things under control, so I really appreciated everybody being there. I wanted to thank the South Oklahoma City Chamber for having me join them for Coffee with Councilmember last Tuesday, we had a great turnout, and I also would like to congratulate the Oklahoma City Museum of Art, they had their 10th birthday on Friday afternoon, the weekend was free Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and I understand even on Friday, they had somewhere between 600 and 700 folks visiting the museum. So it was a wonderful weekend, and it's hard to believe that, you know, Carolyn Hill's beautiful vision of 10 years ago, you know, it's important, I think, to remember that the museum was not one of our original MAFS projects. I think so many people think that it was, and the museum was not, and it's a 100% privately financed gem in downtown Oklahoma City, so looking forward to 10 more wonderful years.
Thank you. Skip?
Yes, I would like to, to thank Mr. Michael Owens, last Friday I had an opportunity to interview Mr. Michael Owens, who is director of the Ralph Ellison Library, and Ralph Ellison was born in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, on March 1st, 1914, and in, paying respect to, to his legacy, and of course, the 60 years of the publication of The Invisible Man, we had an opportunity to share with the, with our public, the accomplishments of Ralph Ellison and some of his great works, and of course, how the Metropolitan Library has been so kind to work with the library and developing and recognizing the accomplishments of Ralph Ellison. And so it was a great interview, it'll be showing on Channel 20 soon. Would also like to extend my condolences to, to the family, to the extended family of whoever they are, of the young lady that was, was murdered in Oklahoma City at, at our bus station on last Friday. And it's, it's very, very sad to know that someone's life is, is taken at the hands of a murderer, and, and in a public facility where, you know, waiting on transportation, and all of a sudden, life is gone. And so I think this just goes to show the increasing deviant behavior that we are experiencing in our society, not just in people's homes, not on streets, but in basically every facet of, of our society. And I don't know what the, what the security measures were at the, at the bus station, but I would like to think that, you know, it was as, as fitting as, as needed to be, but, you know, sometimes you just can't control, you know, outrageous behavior of individuals. But, you know, I just think that it'd be appropriate to extend our condolences to the family of that young lady whose life was taken for, for nothing. And I got one other question, and I don't know whether or not we can answer today, or get an answer today, but I've gotten a lot of calls, and I see some of it myself, and I'm beginning to wonder the, the purpose of our Oklahoma City Police Department and the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Department. I see so much of the, the intermingling of, of cars in areas that one would think that it was the jurisdiction of the Oklahoma City Police Department in reference to stopping vehicles, writing citations, and it's the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Department. And I'm just wondering, are we getting to the point where we should be looking at a, a, more of a interchange partnership with the Sheriff's Department and the Oklahoma City Police Department? Or who has the jurisdiction in reference to inner-city traffic stops? Is that-
Why don't we bring the police chief in and, and talk about that? Is he around?
I'll, I'll answer a little bit, only because I've asked that question before, if the chief comes in, he can correct anything I say. Oklahoma County Sheriff has the ability to write anything in Oklahoma County. As a courtesy, they typically try to only do traffic in those unincorporated areas of Oklahoma County. But that doesn't mean that they can't write tickets in, in Oklahoma City, because they have that jurisdiction in the whole county, so. How, how that agreement is laid out, I don't know, but-
But they do do, they do have specific federal grants for, for drug intervention that they do patrol very heavily, and I don't think it's any secret, I think you see them regularly out there, intersection of I, I-44 and I-35, and the intersection of I-35 and the Kirkpatrick Turnpike, they're there on a fairly regular basis.
I'm talking about where, I'm not talking about out on the highway, I'm talking about in the inner city, I'm talking about like a 23rd and Broadway, a 23rd and Walker.
And, and these appear to be traffic stops to you? Is that what, that's your impression?
Yes.
Yeah, is it unusual for the sheriff to be handing out traffic citations inside developed limits of Oklahoma City?
No, sir, the county sheriff's jurisdiction with us, they have jurisdiction in the county, so they also enforce traffic.
Do they, do they generally disclose to you when they're going to be patrolling for traffic, or do they just generally act upon their own?
They just generally act upon their own.
And they're acting within state law, I'm assuming, and City of Oklahoma City is, is acting within state law, and the sheriff's acting within state law, and there's overlapping districts here, and, and that's what you're viewing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you have legitimate overlapping jurisdictions of, of the inner-city enforcement? Is that right?
Yes, we do, yes, we do.
And so when a sheriff writes a citation, and the inner city is, those citations at the city municipal court?
No, sir, that, that would be a state citation, on a uniformed state citation, and it would be in district court.
Why do I, why, I'd like to get some numbers on that. How many, how many citations are being issued by the sheriff's office? Can we get that, is that public record, I'm assuming?
We could research that and get that.
I appreciate that, I'd like to see that, thank you.
The number of citations issued by county officers in the Oklahoma City limits?
Yes.
We can get that.
All right, thanks.
Have we ever considered, then, if, if we have such overlapping enforcement, and it's all for the same common goal, to create some type of joint partnership in reference to jurisdictional aspects of funding?
Well-
I mean, does that make any sense economically, to, to look at a more partnership agreement with the inner, well, say it just for once?
Regionalization is something that-
I mean, regional-
It's something that's been discussed for years and years and years, very difficult to, to pull, pull off. Obviously, there is overlap, and to make furthest worse, for items even more complicated, inside city limits, you also have the Highway Patrol writing citations on, on the highways and interstate system in there, so that you can, you can be stopped going up I-35, it could be a sheriff, it could be Oklahoma City Police, or it could be the Highway Patrol as you stop going up there. And yes, there is overlap on it, and, you know, it's, we have had discussions over the years, is that the best use of our resources to do so?
So as we go forward, we can continue those discussions in reference to the best use of, of state money, city funds, and federal grants in reference to regionalizing, you know, the possibility, or the possibility of having a more regional concept as it relates to law enforcement?
We already have, have a unit that's the Metro Interdiction Team, it's the committee that does work the interstates, and that's a joint venture with the county and with Oklahoma City Police Department and the Oklahoma County District Attorney's Office. So we already have that in place.
But that's just for drugs?
Well, it's, it's an aggressive traffic enforcement on the interstate system. They, they do tend to interdict drugs, but it's an aggressive traffic enforcement unit.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Pat?
Just a question, Your Honor. Last week, in our discussion associated with the introduction of the Building Code Ordinance, we had some discussion about hardwired smoke detectors. I'll have to admit, I was a little confused when I left about when they are required, and in what, under what circumstances they'd have to be added. And if we could get that information prior to the time either we have the public hearing or we vote, I think it would be very helpful.
Bob Teener sent me a memo on that yesterday, I didn't have time to get it out yesterday afternoon, but I'll get it out either today or tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
So that information, that's, it's very much in progress.
Thank you, sir.
All right. City manager reports?
Yes, outside of claims of peril, in your packet is a action plan, if you will, on Bicentennial Park regarding the art. When that was discussed a couple of weeks ago, Councilman Widen particularly asked, you know, what's the process going to be for doing that? So we've laid out both an inventory of the art over there, as well as our plan and timeframe from going forward, and who's going to be involved in, in those discussions. So we just wanted to lay that out for the council, and there will be further items coming to council on that in the future.
Citizens to be heard, anybody that's not signed up? All right, Sarge, I know you've signed up, but the, the same policy is in place about announced candidates, so we have executive session, we'll be back.